...and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals in the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting. As well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to an inaudible function during committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is an amendment to Appendix A of Audit Report 17-009. It will be distributed momentarily. And also, in the report of Audit 17-009 Part B, we require an amendment, and that will be considered under Item 8.1.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, moved by Counselor Vanderbeek, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve the April 10, 2017 Meeting Minutes as Presented, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Consent items, is there any discussion respecting 5.1? Counselor Pearson.
Move it.
Oh, move. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Charles, for the report. I noticed on page two of three that these sustained load volumes for an organization the size of City of Hamilton with almost 8,000 employees in comparison with other cities may indicate a need for further action to ensure employees are comfortable with reporting concerns. Thank you for highlighting that, because I think that's something that Mr. Murray will tell you that I've been saying all along. But I really appreciate the report, and I'm prepared to second it with Counselor Pearson.
Moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor, carried. 8.1, as stated under Changes to the Agenda, amendments are required to report AUD 17009. Mike, would you speak to this matter?
So, through the chair, apologize in the lateness of the response. So, in terms of 8.1, you'll see Recommendation B is that staff report back with the management action plans as it relates to the 14 recommendations. Staff were able to develop the management action plans as of last Friday, and we are just printing off the amended Appendix A. So, if possible, I'm wondering if we can just park this, or maybe not. There we are. We have revised Appendix A. So, we do have the 14 management action plans as per the recommendations. And if approved by council today, we could strike Recommendation B of the report. When audit did prepare the report and the recommendations, we were unable to provide the management action plans due to vacations as well as during the budget cycle. We just couldn't coordinate staff to prepare the responses. But again, staff were able to prepare the responses as of last Friday, and rather than committee considered the recommendations of the report and come back in June with the management action plans, we thought it was more appropriate to bring the management action plans before committee with the recommendations today.
Counselor Johnson?
Sorry, not necessarily directions, because when I did read Appendix A, I was a little confused, because usually, it says whether you agree, you disagree, or it's in progress. So, well, because I sit beside you. Anyways, there are three disagrees in here, and most of it evolves around duplications, from what I can understand. So, the first one, the timeline data from the Web Center system, the recommendation that routing and approval metrics be incorporated into performance accountability and development, and it's disagreed, because they currently include these metrics. The current average turnaround time from the date of an invoice is received, and the Web Center until approval is 18 days. Do you want to comment on that? Or maybe Bev?
Through the chair. Yes, the recommendation was made by the auditor to change some of the process we have in duplicate checking. I don't think it was really fully understood what a routine we follow to check for duplicate payments. We have, when an invoice comes into the Web Center via email, it'll look to see if it's a duplicate at that point. If somehow it gets through and gets off to a department and is approved, when it gets downloaded into PeopleSoft, it's checked again and stamped as a duplicate. As well, we have a manual process where we run about three different types of reports, looking for vendors that have the same amount, paid on the same day, that type of thing.
Right.
So, there's, it's a pretty rigorous duplicate check, and the auditor was recommending that we have larger batches when we bring the items in from the emails into the Web Center. And that doesn't work as well when people are verifying to have a larger batch. They're more likely to pick up on a duplicate in a small group of 10.
So, it's a sampling. It's a sampling that they're asking for a larger sample?
Yes, yeah. But we sample, we don't sample. We verify every single invoice.
Okay. And through you to Charles. Charles, I was reading about the duplications through this whole thing. It sounds like this has been a red flag, and that's why it's been highlighted a couple of times. After seeing the disagreed and understanding the process, are you still firm on they should have a larger sample?
Through the chair, I think, it's not the larger sample. It's sampling for duplication within the batch, I think, is the issue. That's what we're talking about, at least in the first. So, I think we're still firm on that issue.
Okay. And the other one that was just...
Through the chair, though, we do have another opportunity. This is a, I want to highlight the fact that this is a continuous auditing pilot.
Right.
So, our intention is to audit these matters quarterly. Typically, an audit is done, let's say, every three, four years.
Right.
We would look at this. But the idea of a continuous audit pilot is more like quality assurance.
Right.
Where you take...
It was a huge jump, and then it just decreased significantly. And that stood out to me. So, I know we're going back a couple of years, Laura, and David, but is there a reason? And I'm sure I asked this question then, but it slipped my mind what the answer was.
So, through the chair, I think one of the other things to look at is the graph that's on page five at the top there. So, one of the areas that was really driving our lost time injuries with the City of Hamilton was around musculoskeletal disorders. And you can see there's a trend, they were rising. It's accounting for 40% of our lost time with the city. So, we put some of those initiatives in place that we described in here, around waste collection, in the paramedic services, in HSR, made significant gains on that, and why they were much lower in the last couple of years in those areas around musculoskeletal disorders. So, 2014 was kind of the peak, and it was all hands on deck to try to get a hold of this and bring those back down again through the work of the departments, the Joint Health and Safety Committee, the unions, et cetera.
Thanks for that, David. And just for the record, corporate services includes fire?
It's under Community Services for Fire.
Okay, so Corporate Services is the one that jumped up at me on table five. Is there a particular department that this was happening, and we finally corrected it?
[laughing]
Did Mike beat people up?
So, through the chair, normally, Corporate Services doesn't have lost time injuries because of the nature of their work.
No.
But in this particular case, there was one employee who was injured in a slip and fall, going from a meeting to a meeting outside, and had a significant head injury. So, that's accounting for all those lost time days, or a significant proportion of those lost time days.
And thank you for that, because that was my next question. Is it one or two individuals, and that's what skews, not skews, but I mean, that's what shows the numbers being so high. The one thing that I was asking for a long time ago was, have we ever documented this on a monthly basis? Because it does help the supervisors' schedule if they see a pattern, so they can schedule the workforce, they can, and realize, you know, wintertime, it's slippery, and summertime, there's other obstacles for the job. So, have we done this on a monthly basis?
Through the chair, our Health, Safety, and Wellness specialists, and they're dedicated to individual departments in this city, provide those stats, probably more on a quarterly basis, but if they do see trends that they're seeing, when they go through the data on a monthly basis, they will share that information with the leadership within the areas that they service. So, they try to keep on top of that. And they also anticipate things that are coming up. So, as we get, for example, into the winter season, we'll make sure our messaging around protecting themselves from slips and falls goes out there ahead of time as well, so...
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly, my questions have been answered, but I just want to comment that I'm pleased to see that overall, there is a decrease, and that is good news. And hopefully, the momentum can continue, and our staff realize that, you know, we want to be sure they come in and they are safe, and doing the best we can to make sure that they're protected, and they take care of themselves as well. So, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Counselor Ferguson?
I just want to point one thing out. I've mentioned it briefly in my previous speaking. Unfortunately, there's nobody sitting behind us today. But if you're watching, take a look at Waste Management. We identified a council, and staff agreed and took corrective action on waste collections. In 2014, there were 193 lost time injuries. In 2016, 18. That's massive, and that's exceptionally good work, and shows that we do respond to problem. In paramedic services, they had 158 in 2014, and 41 in 2016, because we made a strategic investment into the automatic stretchers. And so, you know, the meeting like to paint is always a bunch of mumbling idiots, a lot of clients. Theirs were reacting to a problem and fixed it. And we should be proud of ourselves for that, and very grateful to our staff that they did that and got it across the finish line. Now, if they could bring the cost down, that would be great, you know? I'm still puzzled by the topic, but we're going to get further information on that. But I did want to recognize those two, because they were big hotspots. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. Any further questions? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve, sorry, to receive. Item 8.2, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Vanderbeek. All those in favor, carried. Moving on to 8.3, we have a presentation. Zachary?
Okay. Okay. Thanks. It's all good. Good morning. You're going to preemptively... Can you guys hear me? This is better? So, I'd like to talk to you guys this morning about the latest employee absenteeism report, and some questions that you guys had at the last employee absenteeism back in December. And the last report in December of 2016, we presented the first three quarters of 2016, and there was a lot of questions about a recent rise in fire absenteeism. And there was a lot of questions and confusion about what is a shift, and how long does a shift, you know, last, and how does that compare? And so, for this version of the report, we've started to report by lost hours per employee, because you've got different employees with different shift lengths across the corporation, and so, we're hoping that the lost hours per employee will give you more of a, easier to understand, and remove that complexity of a calculated shift. So, at the December meeting, there were some questions about this recent rise in the absenteeism of fire in 2016. And with the complete year, we see that fire has gone from an average around 100 hours lost per employee to about 118 hours. And I just want to point out, you know, we separate the fire sick bank group from the income protection plan employees in the report, because these, two employee groups have different, it's a different plan that supports these two groups. They're on, you know, different schedules, with different schedule lengths. And so, with good reason, we're trying to, you know, provide this information separately. So, one of the suggestions for why this recent increase happened in 2016 was around aging employees. And we know from looking at the data that as employees age, they're more prone to certain medical issues and higher levels of absenteeism. But, you know, as Counselor Ferguson pointed out in the last presentation, was there a 14% increase in a one-year period in the age of our employees? And, you know, that's the kind of question that comes with that. Have we aged 14%? And would that explain a 14% increase? And the second part of that is, you know, when we look at the average age of fire employees, since 2011, it's started to decline going down. So, it leads us to think that, you know, while we know that older employees have higher levels of absenteeism, this might not be the driver for this recent increase in 2016. We also see that the average years of service for fire employees is starting to trend down. And this is because fire employees are starting to go through their baby boomer wave of, well, into their wave of retirements. On this slide, you can see the retirements per month of fire employees from 2011, going up to the most recent data I could get on 2017. And you'll see here at the midway point of 2016, the average number of, the purple line represents a rolling 12-month average. So, each month, I'm dropping one off and picking one up. And so, you'll see the average about two retirements per month, or 24 retirements per year over this level. And inside of that average, there's some months where there's zero, and, you know, somewhere there's four, and two. It's a mixed bag. But at the end of 2016, we see, you know, a peak in the number of retirees here. And the average, the 12-month rolling average, goes up to three at this time. And so, this leads me to think, you know, is there a correlation between this recent increase in the fire absenteeism and the recent, you know, level of retirements that we've had here? So, to get into this, I want to spend a little bit of time just talking about how we build the absence report each year for you guys, because this is where it gets really tricky and difficult to try and explain this problem. And on this slide, I've taken the absenteeism for just one employee, and our absence data now goes back to 2001, so we can start to get a better understanding of what's going on inside this data. And when you think of that 100 years, or 100 hours per employee that we talked about on the first slide, you can see, you know, there's the 100 hours per employee. And in this individual example, you see variation, right? Inside of the averages, you've got many different employees with different and unique experiences. And when we report this data on the calendar level, we're basically totaling up all of these employees, and then, you know, dividing by the head count to get the average. And so, you're seeing the mixture of all of these individual activities. But if we're going to understand the retirement activity, I just want to focus on the 2014 year here. So, this employee goes on to retire in 2015. And so, we've reorganized the data by a reverse years of service, or a years from retirement. And so, that 2014, the absenteeism that was taken in 2014, for this employee, is really taken, in their last year, it's a mix of the 2014 and the 2015 year, and in the second last year, it's really a mix of the 2014 and the 2013. So, I hope I'm being clear. If there's any questions, I'd want to address this now, because...
Did you want to deal with this, or do you want to ask at the end of the report? I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say, if you want to ask any questions about this now?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that the concept is clear of how I'm moving from...
Yeah. So, can you just go back one, so we can get some context?
So, if you take any one of these years...
Right. So, my question is, 2014 shows a big spike.
Yep.
2015 shows this is a retirement year.
Yep.
Do you have the exact month of the retirement? Because wouldn't that, wouldn't that tell you? So, if they retired, say, in March or in April, that line would definitely be a lot lower than if they were retiring in November, that line might have been higher.
Exactly.
So, do you have the exact month? Does that, is that correlated, what I'm talking about?
So, this is, when I calculate this, we calculate it for each employee individually, based on their retirement date. So, when we say it's one year from retirement, it's the year before this employee's retirement. And when we do it for the next employee, we have to calculate it individually for that employee, based on their retirement date.
So, would you say then, and this is not to pick on firefighters, this is just looking at the graph, so if an employee is going to retire in November, then the year, that year is going to show a significant increase, if we follow your train of thought, that year will show a significant increase, because the retirement date's not till November. But if the retirement date was in February or March, it would show less for that year for sick days?
That's what we're seeing on this calendar chart.
Right.
Because when we report by calendar, you're lumping all kinds of different employees with different individual, you know, employee cycles, and so, you don't see that kind of activity at a department or division level, or when we report, you know, at the city So, I hope that's clear. So, for this next slide, what we did was look at all of the retirements from 2011 to 2017 in the fire division, for the 10 years on the, as they approach retirement. And so, we selected this, because if you're retiring in 2011, to understand the last year, you need to go back into 2010 potentially, and to understand the last 10 years, you're going to need to go all the way back to 2001. So, 2011 is the first time we can start looking at a 10-year window, and then, we took it right up to the retirements we know about, to get the largest group of people to understand this trend. And so, you can see the average is a very different picture than the individual employee example. And I wanted to, you know, put that out there, so that you could remember, not every fire employee takes the average sick time every year. When we present these averages in the report, this is the average behavior of an entire group of people. And inside of there, you're going to see different levels of activity in each of these years, but this is the average activity that we're seeing here. And so, for fire, as they approach retirement, you know, in years 10 and 9, you can see that these employees are, you know, on average, below the 100 lost hours per employee that I was talking about at the beginning. And then, through years 10 to 3, you know, we see higher levels of absenteeism. And in the last two years, we see some elevated activity that's here. So, I want to stop for a second and talk about page six of the report that's accompanying with this. You'll see the chart for the fire sick bank portion, sorry. And I want to talk about the categories of the significant modified incidental that we break our absenteeism down. And so, in fire, when we talk about significant absence, it's any absence that is greater than 24 hours in length. Modified is any work that is part of a return-to-work, modified duties. And then, incidental are the absences for fire that are 24 hours or less. And so, the 118 hours that we're looking at for 2016 is really comprised of 64 hours per employee in significant absences, and 54.8 hours in incidental absences. And so, again, looking at those retirements here, to try and provide some context of what's going on, I've broken out those last 10 years as they approach retirement, and you can see that inside of that data, there's a mixture of incidental and significant behavior that's driving those absences underneath the average. So, I want to stop for a second, talking about fire, and talk about IPP, the Income Protection Plan. It's the plan that's used for, you know, the rest of the corporation that's eligible for absenteeism. And we did the same analysis, looking at retirees from 2011 to 2017, and what are their absenteeism rates as, you know, they approach retirement in the last 10 years? And we see similar trend in the data. If you look at the report that we're providing today, there's, you know, data going back to 2013. And for an IPP employee, the average has been hovering around 80 hours per lost, lost time per sick employee. And so, you see a similar, you know, 10 years before retirement, they're below the average, on average. And then, as they approach retirement, we're seeing some activity in the last two years at an elevated level. And in the same way that we broke apart fire to provide some context, this is the individual categories that you see for the IPP. Now, these are two different plans, and they have different definitions. We use incidental and significant, but in the IPP plan, an incidental absence is anyone that's six days, or less than six days in length. So, for an employee like myself that works Monday to Friday, if it's more than five days, then it becomes a significant absence. Anything less is, you know, classified as an incidental absence. The green that you see down there is modified absences, or people that are part of a return-to-work program. And then, the chronic is in purple. And I should point out that we haven't had the chronic program for that long. It's a recent, in the last couple of years, 2014, that we introduced this program. So, it wouldn't be included in all of the history, because in some cases, we're talking about employees that retired before the chronic program was started. So, I just want to jump back to where we started at the beginning, talking about this increase in, between 2015 and 2016, and the retirements that we see, you know, at the end of the year, or at the end of this period. And this chart here, where we're talking about the lost hours per employee. And it's difficult to mix these individual employee experiences with calendar reporting. It's a real challenge. But on this slide, what I've done is, for each of the years from 2011 to 2016, I've color-coded the impact of the retirees, based on the year that they're going to retire. And so, I'll just talk about this green example. If you retire in 2012, so you're going to retire in this year, the impact on 2011 was here, and then here in 2012. There's no green in 2013 and on, because that employee doesn't work here anymore. Like, perfect. We're understood. This is a difficult slide, though, now, because I've mixed retirements, seven years of retirements in 2011, and there's only, you know, the 2016 retirements in 2016, and part of what we know to date with 2017. So, in my final slide here, I just want to show, if we only consider the last two years of an employee before they leave, this was the impact of those absences in their last two years. And talk again about averages, right? When we report here on averages, you're talking about the entire fire division, you know, 540 employees approximately. And each year, you know, there's a segment that's retiring, and that varies from year to year. You get different retirement rates. And so, it's why it's so difficult to answer this question about this recent rise, and does it, you know, we don't know yet what this red box will actually become. There's still the rest of 2017 retirements to go, and as those come in, and we understand the impact of those absences, I would suggest that this box, this red box, might grow, and that you'll see, for employees who are not in their last two years, the absenteeism is likely hovering around 80 lost hours per employee for the majority of the fire service. And then, the extra impact of retirements is the red box. So, in conclusion, I just want to remind the committee of the journey that we've been on with absenteeism. It was not that many years ago when we didn't talk about incidental and significant. Those are things that we've created to better understand absenteeism. And today, we're introducing this concept of, you know, years before retirement, or reverse years of service. Everyone I've shown this presentation to has had multitudes of really good questions. And as we understand more, it just leads us to ask more questions. I could have been working constantly to bring more and more data, but there's also, you know, there's a lot we don't know yet, and there's some things that we need to go back and dig into and understand better. But, you know, I think we want to demonstrate that we're taking absenteeism, you know, and trying to understand it better very seriously, and improve it, and arm the management, return-to-work, HR, and everyone with the best information, so that they can focus on the correct problems and, you know, put the resources our best spent. So, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Zachary. Counselor Ferguson, then Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thanks for your presentation. I'm not familiar with the firefighter collective agreement. Does it allow firefighters to accumulate sick leave, and then take it as cash when they retire?
I'm not the best person to field that question.
So, through you, Madam Chair. The collective agreement provides for 1.5 days each month, and they accumulate a sick bank, at which point, upon retirement, they can cash out up to six months.
So, it's the exact same as police, then? Police is, you can accumulate up to a maximum of six months.
That's correct.
So, why are they using up these sick days near the end of their career, if they can get it in cash later?
So, through you, Madam Chair, we're not entirely certain why they're using up the sick days. We have some considerations for discussion in camera that we'd like to share with the committee. But to respond to the question, why are, you know, why is the absenteeism increasing near the last two years prior to a retirement of a firefighter, we don't, we don't know exactly why, but we have some thoughts that we'd like to share with committee.
Okay. So, because if they're missing on average 120 hours, that's five 24-hour shifts per year, and they work seven days per month, so that's almost a month a year that they're taking off in sick days. And quite frankly, that's out of control. If that happened with any other employee group, we'd be all over it. And, you know, we've had this discussion before, and the speculation was, it's this 24-hour shift. I would suspect, as they're approaching retirement, it's tough to work 24 hours. I know, when I was 20 years old, I could go three straight shifts without, you know, I'd get tired, but I could handle it. I have trouble going through a 14-hour meeting in here now. Because as you get older, you need your rest more than you did. And so, are we paying a big price because of these darn 24-hour shifts? And of course, we all speculate, because you work 24-hour shift, then you're off a number of days... number of days after that. It's too tempting, if you're up north, to call in for one day, because then you get four extra days, or whatever the scheduled rotation is. And we need to get our head around this, because if it isn't working, if it, because they're aging, and they can't do the 24-hour shifts anymore, which is why they're calling in sick, plus the others that are, it's tempting to call in for a sick day, because you get an extra two or three days then, in addition to the sick day you took off to be able to be on vacation, or run your second business, that's competing with people who are paying taxes in this community, and trying to make a living off the second business that they're in. You know, we figured it out in WAST, with the lost time injuries. We've figured it out with paramedics, with the backstrands. We can't seem to figure this one out. It comes back year after year after year, and quite frankly, it's unconscionable what the taxpayers are paying here for this fire. And it may be time to take a very aggressive stance. I know the 24-hour shift was put in for collective bargaining process, where we, when somebody in an arbitration had this award, and then it starts to spread. But we're lobbying like crazy, and we're just about done with police suspension without pay and egregious issues. Maybe we've got to start this very aggressive campaign to kill these 24-hour shifts, because that's unaffordable. It's unacceptable, and it's not fair to the rest of the place. I don't see this jump near retirement in any other division in the city. You don't see a big jump in sick days for people who are certainly working in police, because I'm familiar with that, but working in public works, and they're doing heavy work also in public works. It doesn't jump off the chart like this does. And we've got to start to do with this, and do with this aggressively. And I don't know whether the chief has any comments of what I just said, because I recognize, chief, my comments weren't pretty. I get that. But damn it, we have a duty to the taxpayers to fix this problem. So any thoughts on my comments?
So through the chair to Counselor Ferguson, certainly your comments are well-taken. At the end of the day, I think Zach made the comment, I think we need to be careful in terms of, at this point, where we go in terms of maybe some conclusions or prospective conclusions. We need to have some time, now that we've seen this, and it's, and Zach's presented it, to delve into this and find out what the breakdown looks like in terms of what's creating or potentially creating the absenteeism. Because certainly, I would hate to think that we are making some suggestions that, you know, that maybe folks aren't sick when they're booking sick, because there certainly are many cases where people are. And I think we need the opportunity to take a, take the time to take a look at this. That being said, Counselor, we certainly understand the impact that this potentially has, and we need to work together with our partners from HR, as well as return to work services. And I can tell you that I've had that conversation with the union executive already as well. They understand that we need to delve into this, and we need to find a solution, because it cannot continue. So we're prepared to do that, and to take this on, and do what we need to do, once we have all the facts.
Okay, but through you, Madam Chairman, chief, we've been delving into this for years. And the message I'm hearing today is it's being caused because people are taking off, using up their sick days before they retire. I think it's the subtle message that we're trying to be told today, but if they get payout, and it's a lot easier, and, once again, I know in place, because we know exactly how many sick days have been banked, and we build a reserve, so there's no big shocks when you have a big retirement year. The sick days is a liability, and, you know, we've heard some members of the public criticize, oh, we're hoarding money in that area. Well, we're not. We know exactly what the sick days are. We know what our liability is. We know what we're eventually going to have to pick up. And in police last year, we had about 35 retirements. And if you had to expense that in one year, it'd be uncontrollable. But this thing, you can't control. Through you to the chief, when you have absenteeism, how do you backstop that? Because you have to have four guys on a truck.
So through the chair to the counselor, it really depends. Not all absenteeism creates a situation where at minimum strength. It also, there's a number of variables in terms of how many people we have off on vacation as well, whether or not we're at the max for that. If we are at a minimum strength, and people are absent, then we backfill with overtime. There's no question about it. I would, though, if you wouldn't mind, through the chair, I think we need to be careful. I'm not sure, I heard Zach say that this is a direct relation to people that are booking off in terms from a sick bank. I think we need to be careful. I don't think we have the data. That's the understanding that certainly I have in talking with Zach and our friends from HR, is that we need to have a better understanding of what's driving this. So I would be very concerned if all of a sudden we're going to, into a direction, making assumption that I don't think is really what Zach was saying.
If I could just add to that?
Go ahead.
I just want to point out, you know, causation and correlation are, you can't combine those two. So just because there's a relationship between the activity, we can't necessarily infer what that means. And that's kind of what I was trying to allude to at the end. We do want to get into the data and get a better understanding of what's going on inside there.
And quite frankly, Madam Chair, I think it'd be interesting to see a chart also, if you're going to delve into this a little further. What's our overtime spending been like for the last five years or 10 years? And watch trends in that, too. And if you're having more sick days, then you're probably having more sick time, or overtime, because you've got to bring an officer in. So it's a double whammy. You're paying the sick day, plus you're paying somebody else to replace them. And, you know, schedules, I think you guys are pretty good at that, scheduling vacations, and making sure that you have, you know, it always puzzled me up at the news station on Fellers Green Road, why you needed 20 firefighters for one truck? And so if you're very capable to explain that, it's the 24-hour shift, the days off, plus you schedule vacations, and it works out to an average of 20 firefighters per truck. But, you know, we're watching this in the other parts of the city, too. Is our overtime? And, you know, now that has a double impact on the taxpayers. If you're paying out the sick days at the end, that's one thing. But if you're having a sick day and having it replaced with overtime, and I assume overtime is time and a half at least, and, quite frankly, chief, if you want to delve into it, delve into it. But our patience is getting thin in this. You've been waiting far too long to know what's the cause and what's the fix. Public Works figured it out in one year, and fixed the problem with 32% of our employees getting lost time injuries every year. Our paramedics figured it out that repetitive backstring was caused by having to lift the stretchers. Cost a million bucks, but it came to us, and we accepted, and we got good results. We need you to figure this out, otherwise we're going to have to get real aggressive. And I don't think you want us imposing something on you. I think you'd rather plan the solution than tell us how to do that, similar to what they did in public works, and similar to what they did in paramedics. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Brendan, Counselor, no. Counselor Vanaby, can you take the chair, please? Thank you. I do have a question. What is the average age of a retiree?
For this group of FIRE employees, the average age is 57.3. Yeah.
57.3. And can you clarify how the, how many sick days an employee is permitted to bank? And the payout, Counselor Ferguson, through the chair, Counselor Ferguson was going down this line of questioning as well. How many can they be paid out, and how many can they bank? There's got to be a reason that they're taking so many sick days in the previous two years prior to retirement. So if you can simply take the cash, all of the cash, why would you not just take the cash? Why is there a split? Or is there a split? Is there any, is there any way of explaining that? Through the chair?
Yep. So the sick leave plan that is in place for firefighters, they're continued to accumulate a day and a half per month, and there isn't that same sort of cap in the total number of days. So they are able to hold more than the six months in their bank, and then, you know, whatever they have at the time of retirement, up to six months is paid out, so.
So in other words, if they have two years of sick, accumulated two years of sick days, then they could take two years and still have the six-month payout? Is that correct?
Well, I guess they could take a year and a half.
A year and a half, or three years, then they could take two and a half years and six-month payout. So that's the difference, is through the chair, there's no cap?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Any further questions? Counselor?
Do firefighters have long-term disability, or is a sick day considered LTD?
They do have long-term disability, but they self-administer. It's a bit different than the rest of the city.
Because police don't have long-term disability up until the inspector position, and that's when we stop granting sick days. Is it similar in FIRE?
There is still the sick leave that's provided through the city, so to speak, and then the LTD plan that firefighters have is self-administered, more or less through their association.
So when you say self-administered, that's self-funded, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to receive item 8.3, moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor, carried. Are there any notices? Oh, sorry.
Just before we leave this, the chief said that they need to figure this out, and I want a timeline, chief, when you're going to be back to us. To delve into it, how long is it going to take?
Through the chair to the counselor, as I'm sure you can appreciate, the presentation's just been finalized in the last day or two. I need some time to speak with labor relations and try and get my head around what magnitude it is. I'd be happy to get back to you with a timeframe until I speak to them. I don't want to commit to something.
Can we, is six months enough? All right.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have, as I mentioned, an in-camera presentation. I think we can talk a little bit more detail about that strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I do believe we need to receive the report first, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor, carried. And to, I guess that's it, Madam Chair? Okay. And are there any notices of, thank you, Zachary, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none? Are there any items of general information or other business? Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to ask, and I'm not sure if Mike could answer, I'll just wait. Sorry, Mike catching you off guard. But do we know, and I know we'll probably be starting the 2018 budget process towards summer and fall, correct?
So through the chair, I believe it's Chris's intent to come forward to committee requesting a guideline for the 2018 budget in the weeks ahead. So I would expect through that report and that engagement of committee, we'll be officially starting our 2018 budget process, inclusive of seeking some direction as relates to capital priorities.
Thank you. With that, do we have any idea at this time what the projected percentages we're going to start out at?
So through you, through the chair, we did provide, at the end of our 2017 tax-operated budget process, we provided a slide that identified a number of our pressures, and we can bring that back. We know that through committee's approval of the public transit infrastructure funding is, that will represent additional 0.4 or 0.5% capital levy pressure for 2018 over and above the, what council's approved as a 10-year, 10-year capital levy increase in principle. So council's approved a forecast of a half percent capital levy increase. So the 0.4 or 0.5 will put us over and above the half percent. So we'll be approaching, again, for 2018, a capital levy forecast of just short of 1%. I expect we're going to continue to have employee-related pressures as it relates to collective agreements. In 2017, that represented $14.9 million, and that, that's approximately a 2% levy increase. So I expect we'll see similar pressures going into 2018. I expect we'll have some inflationary pressures around fuels and commodities, as well as we'll continue to have as a reassessment period. We're going to continue to see the impacts of the tax shift from non-res to residential. So again, what was experienced in 2017 is part of a four-year reassessment period, so we're going to see those shifts in 2018, 19, and 2020. Again, we're going to continue to see variability across residential property owners across wards, similar to what we saw in 2017. And also, I expect we're going to see similar trends between urban and rural. Very much in 2017, we saw lower-than-average increases in farmland, and I expect that to continue for 2018 through 2020. Again, when we come forward with seeking some direction on the guideline, we'll come back and provide that summary of some of our cost pressures going into 2018, as well as some of the impacts that reassessment will continue to have for the next three years.
So just bare minimum percentages given, we're almost at 4%, just on what you've given me as percentages.
So through the chair, I think that 4% to 6% range, exclusive of some of the reassessment shifts. And again, ward by ward, the experience is going to vary principally because of reassessment. Finally, is the one other variable will be area rating. So we did see, through the deferral of the third year of the 10-year transit strategy, that very much had an effect on wards 1 through 8. It represented a deferral of about 0.2% in levy pressures on wards 1 through 8. Because of the third year, the 10-year transit strategy was focused on growing services in the former municipality, city of Hamilton. So again, what I would expect as we implement that third year is to, wards 1 through 8, we'll see that 0.2% pressure going into 2018.
Thank you. And Mike, I understand, I think I read it somewhere, with regards to the vacant properties and the legislation, so that's coming back as well, because that's going to have a big impact.
So through the chair, we, council did approve a communication strategy, and an engagement strategy. We are, staff are engaging with HABIA, as well as the BIAs, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and community hubs, and we've, I believe we've extended an invitation to those counselors who have community councils. The change in legislation will provide flexibility to municipalities as it relates to commercial vacancy rebate, as well as the vacant and excess lands tax rebate. So we are entering into the consultation process. We have until July 1 of this year to, in order to impact 2017 and 18, we need to bring forward a report, and council will have to approve some. Assuming there are changes to our current policies, those changes have to be before the minister, I believe, on July 1 of 2017, to take effect into 2017 and affect this in 2018. So there is an opportunity. I believe we expend, we levy approximately $3 million in total in terms of the commercial vacancy, as well as the excess and vacant land. And again, we will bring forward recommendations and alternatives to council, again, prior to July 1. And again, we'll link that to our economic development strategy, because it's important that whatever we put forward, again, aligns to council's priorities around economic development as well.
Appreciate that, Mike. And just one last clarification. So on the commercial vacancies rebate, you mentioned the groups that we're involving. Are we putting a notice in the paper, though, to advise business owners, property owners?
So through the chair, I believe that is part. I know that we've, just last week, I think, we approved the news release, so I expect there will be notification in the newspaper, on the website. We have, provide communication to the ward counselors. Again, the invitation is, if you have community councils that you would like staff to present this to, we are engaging BIAs, as well as HABIA, and the Chamber of Commerce. And again, if there are other stakeholders in our community that wish to have a dialogue with staff prior to the report coming forward, we are open to those conversations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I'm not sure if something's gone out to us yet, and I apologize, because I've just been clearing through LRT emails, and I'm just slowly trying to get caught up, so I'm down to 220. But if you could possibly resend that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to move into, sorry, Counselor Ferguson?
Mike, I absolutely agree with Counselor Pearson. Could you not send that email again until after Wednesday? Because it'd get buried in the hundreds of other ones, you might miss it. And so I appreciate that, if you could do it Thursday or Friday.
So through the chair, to avoid the information being buried in emails, what we'll do as well is, there's well as there's a news release, as well as the email, we'll print copies off and provide it to your offices so that you have hard copies as well.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.1, managing employee absenteeism labor relations strategy pursuant to section 8.1 subsection B of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 239.2 subsection B of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including city employees. I would now ask the public and any staff who are not required to be in this closed session meeting, please exit the chambers, taking all of your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to return to hear any further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event they are in closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding with the meeting to provide members of the public and the media time to return to the meeting room. Moved by Counselor Vanderbeek, seconded by Counselor Pearson, carried.
I'm going to take this one with me. I might still need a little. So I'm not going to stand up here with you. I'm not going to stand up here. I'll field some questions if I need to. No, it's okay. I think I'll be good. Yeah.
May I please have a motion to receive item 12.1, moved by Counselor Pearson, seconded by Counselor Collins. All those in favor, carried. May I please have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Counselor Brenda Johnson, seconded by Counselor Aidan Johnson. All those in favor, carried.